I know. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order this meeting on October 8th, 2025. We customarily have our moment of silence. There's a lot going on in the world, so whatever you would like to reflect on, please do. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We do have a special action tonight, which is the swearing-in of a couple of new firefighters. So if Chief, you could come up and please introduce them, and we'll take pictures and all that good stuff.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce and swear in our new firefighters. This addition to our staff will enable us to continue to meet the needs of the community and provide the service that our community deserves. We look forward to the continued support of the Fire Department as we grow. With the number of volunteers reducing, we need to continue to grow to meet the needs of the community. It is my pleasure to have the Honorable Judge Petrucci here tonight to swear in the two new firefighters. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Chris Pankowski. Chris comes to Newtown with nine years' experience in the fire service as a volunteer and career. He most recently was employed with the Benton Township Fire Rescue as a firefighter-fire inspector. He has been a volunteer firefighter with Rockledge Volunteer Fire Company since 2016 and is currently a lieutenant. Chris is a graduate of the Philadelphia Academy Charter High School and currently resides in Philadelphia. When Chris isn't working, he enjoys spending time with his friends and riding his motorcycle. Chris? And our second firefighter is Ryan Thomas. Ryan is a graduate of William Tennant High School, Middle Bucks Technical Institute of Technology Public Safety Program, class of 2017. Ryan has served the Wilmington Volunteer Fire Department for 10 years and is currently serving as a lieutenant. He continues his service in Montgomery County, working part-time at Center Square Fire Company. Ryan has also served in the Army National Guard in the Corps of Engineers from 2019 to 2023, when he was honorably discharged. Judge Petrucci, if you would come forward and...
Sure. I state your name.
I, Christopher Bicant.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And Constitution and bylaws.
Constitution and bylaws.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
As a firefighter-EMT.
As a firefighter-EMT.
Of Newtown Township.
Of Newtown Township.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, guys. Welcome to Newtown.
We're going to take a break, a little recess, so pictures can be taken by families or... Oh, you're not finished? Judge, you finished?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. If any families are here and you want to take some pictures, now's the time. We'll take a five-minute break. All this meeting back to order. We do have a change in the agenda tonight. We will no longer be considering our solicitor authorizing a draft of the Fire Services Agreement with Newtown Barrow tonight. So that's the change in our agenda. Time for public comment. Please say your name and where you live. And Newtown Township residents first. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chet Zaramba. I'm president of the Newtown Gate Townhouse Association. I've been here before, and I'm here again to rankle some of you, I'm sure, not on purpose, but as a matter of a petition from my residents in Newtown Gate who are quite angry as I speak. I would like to hand... I have a little something for each of you on the board, if I may, before I start.
Thank you.
Now, after 35 years, the board has suddenly decided to begin ticketing residents/taxpayers/voters of Newtown Gate, one of the larger communities in the township, and, in my humble opinion, one of the best. We have never experienced ticketing, never before. In the pictures you have before you, I mentioned that my last statement, last board meeting, belonged to a driver who was, and perhaps still is, employed by the township for towing purposes.
Is this a towing?
That's his truck. I personally called the township police a dozen times to have that gentleman ticketed. I spoke with numerous police officers who told me there was no law against him ticketing there. And as you can see, that is a very wide vehicle, which causes cars coming in opposite direction, at the same direction, excuse me, to go over the midline into oncoming traffic to pass that truck. Now, when I found out he was employed by the township, it sort of, okay, I get it. What I don't get is you allowed this guy to park his truck on Fountain Farm with no repercussions, and all of a sudden, out of the clear blue sky, you're ticketing my residents. Now, I'm not going to mention any names, but I had a couple of residents who have called you, individual board members, with the same complaint. The only one that rankles me of all the comments I've heard from my people is a comment by one of the board members that "the law is the law." Well, my response to that is, yes, I'm a law-abiding citizen, never have had any problems with the law when it's applied fairly and equitably to everybody. I don't need to hear "the law is the law" when certain entities, people, whatever, are allowed to circumvent the law. Why? Because they're employed by the township, and the rest of us aren't. That is unacceptable. So I'm going to say tonight, I don't want to get hostile. I was already warned by my wife not to offend some of her friends on the board, and I promised her I wouldn't. So I will leave it at that. I have another one of my board members who has done a lot more research than I have on the situation regarding the white lines on Fountain Farm. So with that, I'd like to ask John if it's all right. John Legomarsino, who is also a board member on the Newtown Township, Newtown Gate Townhouse Association.
Is it okay for me to start?
Yeah.
John Legomarsino, as Chet mentioned, I'm on the HOA for the townhomes in Newtown Gate. You all have received emails from me with some interesting replies. One of... I'd like to start quickly and just mention which, something that I think we all agree on, and that is that the traffic situation at Newtown Gate is out of control. Clearly, this is the industrial park or commercial park that's adjacent to Newtown Gate?
That we can't get... We can stand here to...
Stand here and agree. You guys can look at that. That's an example of any business day. That's the line we get, any business day, coming out from 4:30 to 6 o'clock. Every day, that's what you see coming out of the business park, cutting through Fountain Farm Lane, and 95% of those vehicles make the left-hand turn on Newtown Gate Drive, which is the short road between Fountain Farm Lane and the Newtown Bypass. Here's a couple more pictures that describe the same thing. That's at the intersection where they block the road. That's a problem. I don't know a solution to that. I'm an engineer by trade. I have two master's degrees, and my bachelor's is in physics and math. So I put a lot of time into this, and I use my skills to come up with some solutions. The problem we have with the parking is, kind of coincides with the same issue, and I think we could solve both problems with one solution. The speed of the vehicles going through the neighborhood is typically way over 25 miles an hour. I know that the fire chief, or the Police Chief Hearn, that he put up, multiple times, he's put up a device to allow people to see what their going, what their speed is, and it records, and he's reported on averages. He hasn't given details because of privacy, I guess, but he does give you the averages. He placed that vehicle, that vehicle monitor device about 100 feet from a stop sign, which is really a waste of time, because vehicles don't get up to their maximum speed between a stop sign and a curve. So he places, typically places that near where Penn Street turns into Fountain Farm, near the industrial park up here, okay? If you place that down closer to State Street, where the vehicles have gotten to full speed and they can't even navigate the curve here and stay inside the lines, where I almost get run over when I walk my dog, that would be more helpful. I'm sure that the numbers would be much higher. That being said, I did send the proposal regarding our parking situation. And the argument that I get from anyone who's replied is that it's illegal to remove the white line from one side or the other. To review for everyone who hasn't heard, my proposal was to find, to work with traffic engineers to find, to locate sections of roadway somewhere between, along Fountain Farms, somewhere along the roadway, one side or the other, where the white line could be removed and designated parking areas could be determined, with signs that indicate no parking beyond this point at each end. Four, five maybe locations that would be considered safe. Just as a driver who's been driving for 40 years, my experience is that outside curves are safer to park on than inside curves where it's blind or straightaways. Outside curves are good because you can see the cars ahead of you, and you can see whether or not someone's entering or exiting a vehicle or whether a vehicle is leaving its spot. That's why I suggested these particular spots. But I don't presume to be smarter than your traffic engineers. Another issue we have is cutting through, cutting through from the bypass. I go to Giant, I come home from Giant, I drive 23 miles an hour down my street. I leave Giant, and you're probably all familiar with it if you lived in Newtown Township for any length of time at all. You come across from Giant Parking Lot into Fountain Farm, on the Fountain Farm Lane via Newtown Gate Drive, which is the short street I said, make a left and drive towards State Street. I live on North York Court, so that's the direction I go. I go 23 miles an hour. I get honked at, I get yelled at, I get people passing me. I was passed by a FedEx truck over the yellow line. My recommendation is that that section of road, which is not really necessary, it's not arterial, be designated as local traffic only. If you make that change, which this board can do, it's a township road. If you do that, it's not arterial. And I'll get to the reason why that's important, because that's one of the reasons why you need a white line on that line, on that road, or at least you claim to need a white line. I have another document, which I have copies for everyone. This is the PennDOT Regulation Regarding the White Fog Lines. There's copies... My color printer is going a little bit haywire, so I made black copies as well as colored copies. I know you don't have time to review that now, but to give you a short order of it, there are requirements regarding whether or not it's required, recommended, or not required at all for having fog lines on the road. It's not required if the road has 3,000 vehicles per day or not, or lower. It's not required if it's not arterial. That section of roadway being designated as arterial could be changed. It's a judgment call. It's a township road. It's not a state road. You folks do have the authority to make these changes. It's not written in stone. It's a township road. If you remove the lines, the white lines, from designated sections and give us some places to park, it would be reasonable. One of the arguments that came back is replies from the emails I sent you folks. And you've already seen this diagram, I said it in a reply, is that we have plenty of parking, and plenty of parking at the quarters, which is the condominium section. We do not have plenty of parking at the quarters. We have 116 spaces for 63 homes. Nine of those spaces are designated handicap. If you take one home, or one spot per person that's non-handicap for the people who live there, remember, they don't have a driveway. It is their only parking space. There's 44 spots remaining. Those 44 spots could be additional overflow for the townhomes. That's your argument. Our bylaws and our HOA laws prohibit that. But again, your argument is that that's our problem. I get it. Even when you add that in, for the 220 townhomes, that's only 154 parking spaces. That's 0.54 parking spaces for visitors per home. I can invite half a person to Thanksgiving this year. So that's pretty much my whole argument. I'd like you to review the documents, if you care to hear or care to look into it. But this document's important. Now, it refers to the more detailed actual PennDOT regulations, but to say that the road can't be modified, it's not a state road. You guys own it. We own it. It's a township road. You can make modifications. I don't know what to do about those other pictures I sent. I don't have an answer to that, when that road lets out. But I tell you one thing. Measuring the speed 100 feet from a stop sign is ludicrous. Measuring the speed when vehicles are up the full speed at the other end of the road, across from Randolph Court, I bet you'll get different numbers. You'll get different averages. And just summarily dismissing us is condescending. I'm sorry. I felt summarily dismissed in some of the replies to my emails. But regardless of that, to tell me that half a parking space per home is acceptable and that it's our problem, I think a lot of the folks, anyone here from Newtown Gate, I think they would agree with me to say that that wasn't the correct, the optimal reply. I appreciate the time. We disagree, and that's fine, but if there's any way that someone could engage traffic engineers and find out the real truth about all this and figure out where we can carve off some parking. I don't like parking near the intersections, near the crosswalks. Someone stopped in front of my house. I live right on Fountain Farm. So I see this out my window. I don't have to go, I don't have to walk the dog to see it. But we got our little pedestals. Thank you for that, by the way. We did appreciate the pedestals in the middle of the crosswalks. I don't know if this board had anything to do with that, but we got them. I sent some emails to the Police Department about it, and we got them. One of the problems, though, if people park too close to the corner, you can't navigate between the pedestal and the curb, and the corner of the car. I did also mention in one of my emails that the long-term solution would be to widen the road, which I know is millions of dollars, like you have on Sycamore Street. But I went to St. Andrews Grade School when it was on Sycamore Street, from 1975 to 1983. So I know it didn't look like this then. I mean, investment was made to provide parking and widen the road, and the parking additions have been made from end to end, all the way from the bypass, all the way down to the Green Parrot. Well, thank you for your time. I hope that at least I get some action where it's more than just summarily dismissed or that it's your final answer, is no. I'd appreciate a little more than that, a little more thought and effort put into helping us resolve this situation, and thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce McIntyre, and I am a resident in Newtown Gate Township Development. This, I am not coming to this to be argumentative, but we have a lot of people, a lot of voters, in that development who are facing a dramatic problem in trying to get through having enough places to park, even for an occasional visitor. Or this is true of a delivery, of a repair truck, of anything, to tell them, "Well, you have to go down and find a parking place somewhere else, because you can't park anywhere except at the quarters," which, in my case, is a quarter of a mile away. That just is not a reasonable answer to give to guests. And it isn't also a reasonable answer to have people having to deal with parking on that Fountain Farm road, because it does create a traffic hazard the way it's done now. People have to pull well over the line to get around people that park, because even those that park don't necessarily park even close to the curb. I really, I can't tell you what a solution is, but I do know that this is a substantial and dramatic problem for all of the residents of the New Gate, of Newtown Gate Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. First of all, I'd like to welcome and thank our new firefighters. I think that's great, and they're welcome to the community. Also, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and Police Chief Hearn and his staff for their support and enforcement of what we've sort of made into the Newtown Township Pedestrian, Bicycle, and Wheelchair Safety Initiative, of which we've done several crosswalks, we're looking at doing sidewalks, and we're now looking at improving the crosswalk at Chandler Hall on Sycamore Street. I'd like to thank everyone for their support on that. And also, many people that I've spoken to express support for the new initiative on e-bikes. E-bikes fall under bicycle safety and pedestrian safety, and so there is a great amount of support for enforcement of e-bike regulations. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lauralee Stuckey, and I'm a resident of Chandler Hall. I am thrilled, ecstatic, overflowing with gratitude, but most of all thankful that our need for crosswalk safety on South Sycamore Street has been acknowledged, and hopefully, it's going to go in the right direction. I am just so thankful that my prayers have been answered for the safety of everyone that lives on both sides of that street. In fact, yesterday afternoon, there was a very screechy stop coming off of the bypass that almost hit an employee, but did not. And that just makes my heart flutter when I hear things like that. So I, hopefully, the sooner the better, we could get this approved and get safety for everyone that lives there and works there. So I'm very grateful, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Ed Merriman, Newtown Grant. Over the weekend, there was an event at Robert Ridge Park, which was the planting of the pollinator garden. Ellen was pivotal, and Charlie, nope, Charlie Lee, nope, there's Charlie. And I attended, Melissa attended, and it was a great event. A lot of people showed up, and it was, it was, it was a rare moment where we had a community together, doing something that made a difference, was fun, a lot of community support, a lot of people making friends, things like that. So I just wanted to say thank you to the board. Thank you for everyone who helped set that up. It was a really nice event.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, moving on. We do not have a report from, from, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission, because there was no quorum. We have no minor approvals. Right, I skipped that. So, which brings me to my report. First of all, I think as Ed just said, I want to thank the many volunteers that showed up Saturday and Sunday to plant our Newtown Township Pollinator Garden. Many thanks to our EAC. Each and every member did their part, especially that guy, Charlie Fuhr, back there, who had a very big hand in getting our volunteers together, and I thank him from the bottom of my heart, Charlie. About 30 people, maybe more, showed up for the initial planting that we thought would be two days, but we got it done in half a day, which, again, was amazing. It was 1,250 plants. So it was very well done, and we're very proud of it. And hopefully, we'll get these guys out to take some pictures in the Newtown Township Pollinator Garden. Everybody. Moving on, we had talks with the Barrow about our fire protection agreement, but right now, as I said before, we're going to not discuss it tonight. We're going to have a work session and discuss it as a board and see what everybody thinks about it, because we're obviously not ready to talk about it yet, although the discussions were productive. I think that's all I have. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to address the public comments that we had. I think I said in my email that I'm committed to sticking with this until we reach a solution. I want to reiterate that. I will be, I'm ready, willing, and able, well, the ability part, I don't know, to come over and walk the whole area to get a sense of what we're talking about, see if there's any other solutions that we can come up with that are mutually agreeable, even in the short run, maybe something long, something different in the long run. And then bring those findings back to the rest of the board, the township administration, and see what we can do. I, for one, am not ignoring your concerns. I have a lot of friends over there, acquaintances, I don't know, friends, I don't know. But, you know, it's, we will, I will stay committed to that. I did miss the last meeting, so I missed Chet's first go-around and bringing it to our attention. I did watch it on YouTube, so I did get an idea of what we were talking about. Since I was at the last meeting, I just want to mention that I was to two gardens. One was on September 11th. The Garden of Reflection had a September 11th memorial, and they made it clear that next year, being the 25th year since the tragedy of September 11th, that they will be... next year being the 25th year since the tragedy of September 11th, that they will be expecting a large crowd and invite everybody. If you haven't been to the Garden of Reflection over in Lower Makeville, please take a chance to go over and see that, it's very, very impactful. And then the other garden was already described this evening. I did stop by the Pollinator Garden, and I was surprised at how, how large it was. And there's enlargement to do in, in the future, so it's great. Just gotta keep the deer from eating everything. And then I, I just wanted to also mention how happy I am to have Chris and Ryan together as new firefighters. And with that, I will pass my time.
Mr. Mack?
Regarding the comments on, is this working? Can people hear me? Good. Regarding Fountain Farm Lane, I've been doing a lot of studying with that and getting ChatGPT to help me out. I understand that the park's rec department is going to have a ChatGPT lesson for anybody who wants to pay $35 to learn more about it. But I asked ChatGPT could not give me a solution to the problem after feeding in all the emails I received from residents and documents from the state and so on regarding those fog lines. So I think we need to do some kind of evaluation by experts, traffic experts. I know we're doing some work for Chandler Hall on their crosswalk. I know some residents at Newtown Gate were also interested in making pedestrian safety an issue over there, too. Maybe, and I know it goes down to the corner where other residents were asking about the crossing over to Summit Square. You've done a pedestrian study there. So maybe there is something we can do to learn more, to get a real expert opinions about what may or may not be possible in, in that situation. So like I said, even ChatGPT doesn't know the answer, so that's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Calabro. Mr. Davis. Okay, which brings us to our public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a public hearing advertised for this evening on the application of Hank Oppenheimer. Mr. Oppenheimer is the owner applicant living at 16 Armstrong Circle, Lot 35 of Newtown Grant. The application seeks relief and an amendment to the final plan of Newtown Gate as recorded to allow the construction of a one-story addition in place of a rear patio that will be removed, along with the construction of a covered deck in the rear of the property, which will result in a, an encroachment of 6.75 feet into the 30-foot rear yard setback, leaving a rear yard setback of 23.25 feet. We have as exhibits the applicant's application, along with all the attachments there, too. We have the Remington Vernic Letter dated September 8, 2025. We have the proof of publication of notice of tonight's hearing, and we have the proof of posting of notice of tonight's hearing. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this application, subject to compliance with the Remington Vernic Engineers Letter of September 8. And if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to approve the PRD variance request for Mr. Oppenheimer at 16 Armstrong Circle for a rear yard encroachment in compliance with Remington Vernic's letter of September 8, 2025.
Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comment from the board? Any questions from the board?
Seems like everything's in order. Planning Commission gave their approval. They have letters from the neighbors. He has a hardship.
Right. Mr. Oppenheimer will have to file a, record, I'm sorry, a revised final plan showing these changes.
Right. I think they made sure he knew that at planning. Any comment from the public? Okay, having a motion and a second and no comment, I will take the vote. All those in favor of granting the variance, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, now that brings us to our consent agenda, which includes minutes and the bills list, a couple of repairs at Helen Randall Park, and, and a, ooh, county line fence. Was that part of Helen Randall Park? Yes, okay. So for the entire consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion for approval. Can I have that motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any comment from the board?
Just regarding the bills list, I always make note of the Barry Isset and Associates. I think they're the zoning people we hire because we do not have our own zoning officer, and that amount was nearly $55,000 for work in August. And the last summary I have was $180,000 for the year, and this $55,000 brings it over $200,000. And I think in the budget, I think it was $180,000 was budgeted for this service. So they're really charging us an arm and a leg, I feel, and I don't know why we can't get a full-time zoning officer. I'm sure it would be, cost us less than $230,000 a year, and the year's not even up. That $55,000 was just for August. We still have September, October, and November, December.
Those, that service is for building inspection and zoning. The building inspectors are paid by a percentage of the fees that are collected as part of the, the application for a building permit.
And what percentage is that? What percentage of this $55,000 comes from fees?
A majority of it.
The majority?
Yes.
So instead of two?
The portion for the zoning officer is usually around $7,000 a month.
Say that again?
The portion for the zoning officer.
That person of the $55,000 is usually between $5,000 and $7,000 a month.
Okay, for doing practically nothing because I know a lot of ordinances are not obeyed.
I'm just trying to give you perspective of where that charges.
All they do is send out letters, so I'm not quite sure, you know, if we're getting our money's worth. That's all I have to say on that.
Any other comment from the board? Any from, oh, yes, go ahead.
I just want to make note that ordinarily, I would, if we were considering these one by one, I would have abstained from the minutes since I wasn't here, but I will vote for the whole package, if you, if that makes sense.
Okay, is that, that okay, or what, Mr. Solicitor?
Technically, you should probably vote on them, just on, let's take the minutes out, vote on the minutes, Mr. Fisher can abstain, and then we can vote on the motion to, for, for the rest of the items.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so without the minutes, let's take the rest of it, and then we'll do the minutes. So we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda without the minutes. We have comment from the board. We had no comment from the public, but we asked. So now I will ask all in favor of passing the consent agenda without the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So that's five to nothing, five to zero, rather.
Yep.
Now, we'll consider the approval of the minutes of the September, September 24th meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes of September 24, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? One abstention. Okay. Motion passes four to one abstention.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one.
Is that how we do it?
Yeah.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one. Okay. Learning every day, guys. Four, zero, one. Got it. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, brings us to our engineers' report.
Thank you. The first item that we have on our agenda here is consider authorizing our office to prepare a cost estimate for the Chandler Hall and Sycamore Street crosswalk. We had taken a look at this preliminarily, but the next step would be to provide a cost estimate to the township to, you know, have an idea of what the improvements would be. So we are seeking authorization in order to do some further work to prepare that cost estimate.
Okay. Do we have such a motion from the board to do this?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I just need clarification. When you say actions necessary to provide cost estimate for crosswalk upgrades, there might be more than one solution to this problem? Is that possible? Is that what you're talking about?
There could be.
You have a plural in there?
We haven't voted to let her go do the stuff yet.
Yeah, so, you know.
I want to understand what she's going to be doing exactly.
We looked at it preliminarily in order to retrofit the, what's currently there to be the most cost effective. So again, the next step, we still have to look more into that, but then we'll be preparing that cost estimate for the, whatever the upgrades are. So the upgrades might be plural here. That could include an ADA ramp, that could include a flashing light, that could include crosswalk striping. I guess that's why it's plural.
So you would recommend the best options available?
We would, yeah, we would look at the situation, work, you know, within PennDOT guidelines to provide the optimal design for that crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of authorizing our engineer to take all actions necessary to, to provide a cost estimate for crosswalk upgrades at Chandler Hall and Sycamore Street, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Brings us to our solicitors' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One item on the solicitors' report this evening, this was on the board's last agenda. This is consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Newtown Borough for the Newtown Creek Pedestrian Bridge product. The resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement that lays out the responsibilities of the township and the Borough in regard to this project. This is a grant-funded project with very, just shy of a million dollars in grant money having been procured, and this agreement merely states that the township will take control of the grant monies, steer the project with the approval of the Borough, and may recoup any costs that are not recovered, recoverable under the grant from the Borough. And I think that's probably the most important part of the intergovernmental agreement. So with our recommendation, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution approving the intergovernmental cooperation agreement.
Okay. Hope everybody's clear on what that means. And can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any comment from the board?
I'm certainly not clear on how the money goes back and forth between the township and the Borough. It says that the township of Newtown is the recipient of the grant monies. We, have we received grant monies for this?
I, no, oh, we have not.
Not yet, it's a reimbursable grant.
Right.
So what happens is that we pay all the expenses first, the township, and then we allocate 50/50 with the Borough to distribute the, once we get the funds?
The funder, the funder, we, we file for reimbursement from the grant. They, they pay us. If there's any, this agreement says that if there are any costs that are not covered by the grant, they will be, if, if the Borough sends their engineer out to do an inspection that the township doesn't feel is necessary, this agreement says that the Borough pays for that themselves if it's not covered by the grant. That's the important part of this. If there's a dispute with the contractor and the township's fine with it, and the Borough is not fine with it, they pay to have the dispute if it's not covered by the grant. That's what this agreement says.
I understand it's covered by the grant, but so the Borough can say, I want, the Borough can tell the engineer, do this and do that, and charge the township? Is that how it works?
No, we are in control. The township is in control.
You just said if the Borough needs to have.
If they want to, if they want to have their own engineer go out and do work above and beyond what the contracted work on the project is, they have to pay their own engineer.
I just want to make sure we're not getting the short end of the stick.
We're not getting the short end of the stick. This is, this is a necessary agreement just for, to cover issues that are not covered by the grant, which is going to be 99.9% of the work on this project.
ChatGPT helped me understand this. Thank you for clarifying further, Mr. ChatGPT Two.
Thank you.
We wanted to make sure everybody understands this this time so that we can pass it, which is definitely the right thing to do. So with that, I'll ask for any other comment from the board.
Yes. I guess, Mr. Solicitor.
Sure.
On five, under costs, C. Township in the Borough shall not act to cause any additional cost without prior agreement from the other party. When does that happen?
Well, I assume that if the township wanted to see something added to the scope of work.
You can do that.
It would have to go to the Borough and say, we'd like to see this added to the scope of work, whether it's covered by the grant or not, we don't know. But if the township wanted to add to the scope of work, or the Borough wanted to add to the scope of work, let's plant more trees along the trail. I don't, I'm making it up.
Right.
Then they would have to get agreement from the other party.
Does that mean in the process of waiting for the agreement to be agreed upon by both the Borough and the township, work stops in regards to whatever is being done?
No, no. Once this project is underway, it's going to, it's going to go. And again, if there are any extras that either side wants, while the project is going on, they can work that out and let the contractor know.
Okay. Number seven, change orders. All change order requests for construction of the bridge project shall be reviewed and approved again by both the township and the Borough. When does that occur?
Well, I would assume that when a change order is required, usually the contractor will come back to the township and say, we've run into an unforeseen circumstance out in the field, we need to, we need to add more of a certain supply of, of building material. We need your approval to increase the cost of the contract by the cost of, the increased cost, and both township and the Borough would review that and ostensibly approve change order.
Now, is that approval of the boards and the council?
Yeah, I think change orders would come before the board, absolutely.
So then we're, we're pretty much in a, a time situation of when we have our meetings to discuss such things?
Yeah, I mean, this board would have to approve any change order to this contract, and the Borough would have to approve.
Okay.
Same.
If one or the other were to disagree on the change order, what happens then?
The change order is not approved, and the original. Change order is not approved, and the original specs are complied with.
Okay. So a change order can basically hold up the production of this situation?
Yes, but, you know, with most projects of this size, it's a million dollar project, there, there probably will be change orders. It's almost inevitable, and that's something that goes hand in hand with these size projects.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen change orders when we did Veterans Park and they were a disaster trying to get those change orders taken care of. The other thing is we're working with another inter, intergovernmental agency, of which, again, I said, I, I don't have faith in them, and I still don't have faith in them because of some other things that were discussed earlier tonight that we haven't kept on the agenda. But I'm, I'm just worried if there's any kind of funds that are going to be spent in addition to the grant money, I want to know what's our guarantee to get the money from the borough?
Well, and again, your best guarantee is disagreement.
What, what, I mean.
Well, it says that if there's costs that are not covered by the grant, that they will be split and the borough bills the, the township bills the.
Isn't everything based on opinion? Could the borough think that it's not being done properly to their specifications, and we say yes? I mean, this is not a, this is not a rock solid agreement here, is it?
I think it is.
Okay, well, we'll hold you to that.
Okay.
Mr. Collaborate, under item eleven, there's a provision for dispute resolution.
Again, and how long would that take? You know, we're talking about everything on here that comes under a dispute, a change order, or a cost in regards to both parties having to agree, of which we've known in the past, it's hard to get these two bodies to agree that, I mean, this could, this could cause a major holdup in the whole situation.
Point of order.
Could.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it can't, or it won't. It could, obviously, we hope to not have to go through any dispute resolution at all, and the project would proceed as, as required.
Thank you.
Point of order. Are we voting on the agreement?
You're voting, you're voting to adopt a resolution approving the agreement.
Right. Have we, have we not looked at this agreement before?
Oh, sure.
Oh, yes.
Yes. It was on your last agenda, it was, the board's had it for over a month.
So we're just giving, the resolution as a procedure in order to get.
Correct. Because it's, because it's an intergovernmental agreement, a resolution is required from both the borough and the township approving the intergovernmental cooperation agreement.
Any other comment from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
There's a public comment.
I'm sorry? Oh, Mike, come on up. I didn't, you should have just walked up there and just gone for it.
I couldn't see it from there.
I didn't see it.
I said I wouldn't violate protocol to do that, so. Two quick points, I hope I can clear this.
Say who you are for everybody.
Yes, Mike Sellers, Newtown Creek Coalition.
Thank you.
A couple of quick points. There's been discussion about what amount of cost overruns. I spoke with Howell Engineering as recently as yesterday, and they're assuring me that the budget for the project as it exists today is more than sufficient to cover everything. So that's permitting, that's excavation, that's all inspections, that's everything. So, and I pressed the gentleman from Howell on that very point, knowing what question had been raised at the last meeting, and he was unequivocal in saying, there is a very tight budget here with the allotted items for construction, all accounted for, and some room beyond that. So my point in telling you that is to give you some sense of confidence that we're not going to be in a situation of, of cost overruns as a practical problem. Second point, though, is that in terms of inspections by either the borough or the township or both, part of the contract that Howell has with Newtown Township is to perform all those inspections. So the contractor or contractors that succeed in winning that bid are going to have the construction monitored by Howell Engineering. You've designated them as the inspectors, and you're paying them to do those inspections. So the point to that very simply is the township and borough engineers should not have a role in this, again, to the point of costs which have been raised, and to the point of just complicating a process where it isn't needed. So on those two points, I hope that gives some, some sense of comfort. As far as the IGA in general, you've done many of these with roads and other things. This is no different than that, it's a piece of housekeeping. But I go back to the central point, that the budget for this project is good, has been drafted in such a way that we will not have cost overruns, and again, to give you some comfort in that regard. I would hope that the relationship with the borough in this project will, as we go forward, perhaps improve the relationship in general between the township and the borough. The borough is surrounded by the township as a practical matter, so the interrelationships are undeniable. The legal dealings of one with the other undeniable, and there will be more projects in the future. So the hope is that this particular project, which is a great benefit to both, and which was a tremendous success on being fully funded first time out, is going to be something that helps that relationship going forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
May I? I believe this connects some of our trails, our trail system, and it'll bring, it'll certainly be a connection between the two municipalities, but there's trail in Newtown that will connect in the township, and as well as I see some work happening on Frost Lane with sidewalks.
Yes, yes. So two points. First is, you're right. It is the, what I call the missing puzzle piece for the Newtown Trail System. So when you look at the map, this particular link is the one that's been missing. So by building this bridge, you create that final link. But I have to tell you that as you look at the support letters that were submitted with the grant application, most if not all of them point out that very fact, that it's a critical link in the trail system for Newtown Township, but also beyond Bucks County and actually southeastern Pennsylvania. So it's a huge benefit to planning in general for trails to have this missing puzzle piece put in place.
I think, I think you mentioned the economic impact it could have, being able to have folks go across the bridge to Goodno, Goodno Corner and the shopping center, as well as some of the shops that are down on State Street.
Correct. Another point that was used to, to advance the application was the notion that pedestrian circulation would benefit both business districts and have the added advantage of getting people out of their cars and walking, and also relieving parking in the village at Newtown, and traffic in general in the highways, which, as we know, these days are pretty congested to begin with. So it touches all those bases, and that's one of the reasons, or many of the reasons that we had success first time out. Thank you, thank you.
Those sidewalks going down Frost Lane are absolutely great, I hear.
It, to fill that in just a little bit, and I'm far from the expert on it, but my understanding is the, the Frost Lane sidewalk has been, or will be funded by grant applica, by grant. There is a pending grant application for Edgewood. So if you think of it, we've got those, those perpendicular lines coming together at the, at the entrance to the bridge on the borough's side, and that will increase this notion of safe pedestrian access to the bridge from that side. And of course, on the other side, there will be the, a crossing across Sycamore to Village at Newtown and Sycamore Center. Both centers will benefit by the, by the pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, and you're right, that was the missing link, because to walk down from like where Goodno is down to where the bridge is going to be, you could take your life in your hands. So now there's sidewalks, and it's a, it's a great thing. Thank you.
So those sidewalks are not being constructed by, with this grant money, it's different grant?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question. All in favor of adopting the resolution approving the agreement with Newtown Borough for the Newtown Creek pedestrian bridge, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
That concludes our report, Madam Chair, thank you.
That brings us to our second round of public comment. Wait, no, I'm sorry, it brings us to our managers' report. I, I just want to skip you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. General fund balance this evening is five million three hundred and twenty-three thousand sixty-seven dollars. Plan expirations before the board with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Hearn to give his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Evening, sir. Good evening, board members. The September twenty twenty-five police report, we documented two thousand two hundred and twenty-six calls for service, logged just under nineteen thousand miles on our patrol fleet. For the month of September, we had thirteen arrests and clearances, including an indecent assault of juvenile, one fleeing police with a hit and run, five thefts, one narc, one trespassing, two narcotics, and three DUIs. There were four new cases referred to detectives for investigation with three crime scenes processed. Those scene, those investigations included a burglary at a commercial establishment in Ridgestown, several thefts, several frauds. There were forty-nine traffic crashes for the month. There were a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and seventy-three citations issued and one hundred and ninety-one warnings issued. Our truck enforcement detail were two task force details assignments, resulting in twenty-two inspections, eight citations, twenty-three warnings. One vehicle was placed out of service, three drivers were taken out of service, and one vehicle was towed. Notable jobs for the month. On nine twenty-one, we had a MERC deployment to New Britton Township for the Pollens Presidential visit. On nine thirty, we had a vehicle flee from the lower Makefield Police Department, and it crashed into an occupied vehicle on the bypass and fled again. Our officers apprehended the subject at Sycamore and Durham Street without any further injuries. On nine two and nine nine, all patrol officers were trained in active shooter training, scenario-based training at a local school. On nine twenty-five, our department officers paid our respects to the final farewell of the three officers fallen in North Regional County, up in New York County. And on nine twenty-nine, we also paid our respects marking the twentieth anniversary of Police Officer Brian Gregg from the borough passing away. Public service announcements. Theft from vehicles, lock your cars, remove your key fobs, do not leave your valuables inside your auto, and report any suspicious activity. We're coming into the high deer season as well. Put your cell phones down, slow down, use your high beams when other cars are not approaching you. On October twenty-fifth, Saturday, from ten AM to two PM, we have our National Drug Takeback Event at the Newtown Township Administration Building, so please bring all your unused medications to here for proper disposal. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one, Chief. Would you agree when we say that we don't want to ticket anybody on Fountain Farm Lane? It's the last thing we want to do. Would you agree with that?
I would agree initially, back when the topic was brought up, that was my game plan, to communicate with the HOA, but obviously, there's a communication issue within the HOA, some people for it, some people against it. The bottom line is, it was pointed out to me, it's a public safety hazard, it's a safety issue for cars encroaching the wrong side of the road to pass parked cars, that will not be tolerated. The citations will continue until you figure out a game plan of where they parked them cars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, I want to thank you for having a speed sign on Davis Lane, I believe, today, last couple of days. I think I was going twenty-three miles per hour, so no problem. But on Fountain Farm Lane, it's a thorny issue there. In the previous report, I used to have, you had a, the data from another, from the new speed indicator sign that's more advanced. It tells you what speed is, what the speed limit is, go slow, it has messages, and so on. I know it probably can't be used on Fountain Farm Lane, but I don't see that table in this report. Is that something that would be there?
As I mentioned last meeting, the new sign board is out of service due to a mechanical problem. It is not placed back in service at this time.
When's the, I, any idea when it would be placed back in service?
We received a package today, we have to fix the machine and then activate it again and put it back out there to make sure it works properly.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Chief, I have a question in regards to, I think you had mentioned in the past, these e-bikes that are out there.
Yes, sir.
That they're prohibited. Well, I see a lot of them on North and South Drive, and usually they're, these kids are speeding up and down the sidewalk, which is kind of dangerous because you have parents walking kids and, you know, babies and carriages and so on. Have you had any kind of success in trying to crack down on these hooligans?
I wouldn't necessarily say they're hooligans, I could think they're, they're young foolish children operating vehicles that are purchased by their parents, that's the problem, without parental guidance on them. You know, if I was fourteen years old and I had one, I'd be riding around town as well. It's more so an educational base, that's why we push it out on the school district, the entire school district, push it out to all their students, we're pushing that on our social media, and we're in partnerships with North Hampton, Newtown Borough, and Upper Makefield are the same process. We do occasionally stop them, educate them, send them home to their parents, but we will do the best we can to keep our kids safe.
Understood. The other thing is in regards to the usage of cell phones in cars, are you seeing any success in maybe enforcing that? I, I try to stay off my cellphone, usually just hands-free if, if I have to, but I still see people with the phones up to their ears and stuff. Is, is, I know you can't be everywhere, but is that anything that's being enforced?
When we observe it, it's a, it's not a, a tickable violation at this point, it had a year sabbatical to ensure the public is aware of it. We're still within that year educational phase. Do I believe it's going to have any impact? None at all. People still continue to use their cell phones and text while they're driving, and then we'll have to enforce it when we see it or observe it.
Do we keep any data of accidents that may have occurred with the, the usage of cellphone? I know it's hard to track, but.
The only time we would do that, if it was a severe critical injury accident, where we would obtain all relevant investigative material to determine the speed and, and whether or not they were on their cell phone during the collision, that type of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That concludes our report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Now we can move on to our second round of public comment. If anybody would like to, please come up.
Chet Zeremba again, President of Newtown Gate, Townhouse Association. I'd like to direct this question to Chief Hearn regarding his comments on ticketing, and it will not be tolerated. As I mentioned the first time I came up with this report, last year repeatedly, we had an issue with the tow truck. I apologize.
And, and the comment should be directed to the board, not to Chief Hearn, thank you.
Last year repeatedly, we had an issue with the tow truck on Fountain Farm. My, I personally called the Township Police ten times, possibly more. I visited the Township Police, I just visited a week ago, Chief Hearn wasn't available to speak with me. Now, if this owner of this tow truck wasn't ticketed, what has transpired in the time Now, if this owner of this tow truck wasn't ticketed, what has transpired in the time during my complaint about that truck to the present time, where out of the blue after 25, 35 years, parking on Fountain Farm will not be tolerated? What has changed? If any of you play sports, you know we don't change the rules in the middle of the game. I see it very much the same way. If certain people can park commercial vehicles on Fountain Farm Lane who do not live there permanently, you're telling me our residents are suddenly going to be subject to absolute intolerance with their vehicles, or their visitors' vehicles for that matter? The holidays are coming up. Thanksgiving, one of the busiest times for people visiting relatives and friends. You have no solution as to where these people can park, nor do I, but I get the calls, you don't. And I get the complaints. What is the township doing about it? And I'm not hearing any answer. We're going to get a study, and I appreciate that. I think it's necessary. But this has been an ongoing issue that has gotten progressively worse every year. Are we going to wait till somebody gets killed? An elderly person, a child perhaps? Then we'll all be... Well, we should have put in speed bumps, which we have requested. We should have put in a light. That's a joke at the Giant exit going up from Fountain Farm. Come sit there with me 4 o'clock in the afternoon. You'll think you're at a racetrack. That stop sign there means absolutely nothing. We need results. We don't need threats. I've been here 55 years in Newtown Township. I don't need to be chastised, saying, "Your car will..." There's no tolerance. You are not allowed, all of a sudden, after all these years, you can't park there. Where is this coming from? Where is this coming from? I have thoughts of it. I'll keep them to myself. I think it's part political, but I do not like this whole thing that my residents, now all of a sudden, there's no, going to be no tolerance for parking on Fountain Farm Lane. They will be ticketed. Why wasn't the owner of the tow truck ticketed? If anyone on the board can give me an honest, logical answer, I'll shut my mouth.
I don't have any idea about the tow truck.
I know you don't. Well, and I respect that, and I'm not trying to put any one of you guys on the spot. I respect all of you. I believe you, I know how difficult trying to please all the residents are in Newtown. I only have a tiny portion that I have to try and please. But it's, when people call up, "Well, why are they doing this?" Give me an answer. Give me a simple answer. All of a sudden, this is not something that started 30 years ago, 20 years ago, 10 years ago, last year. This is all of a sudden now. And we're in the middle, you know, we have an election cycle coming. Everybody has their theories. But it simply isn't fair. It isn't right. And personally, personally, I don't like the police threatening my residents that they absolutely will be ticketed if they park where they have been parking for 30-plus years. That just hits a raw nerve with me. So I want you to just consider that. I am not here to berate anybody, but it's frustrating, just like you guys get the emails, maybe you get some phone calls. I get mostly phone calls. And some of these people can, even elderly people, can go off the rails. I had a person from the quarters call me recently screaming about somebody from the townhouses parking in their parking lot. So if people can't park there, Giant is private property, they don't want us parking up there, and it's dangerous. We don't even have an overpass where you could walk over. Have any of you crossed over from Newtown Gate to Giant lately? Walked across there? You better be on your toes, because those cars come flying down the bypass 60, 70, 80 miles an hour. And God forbid you get caught out in the middle of that. So it's a situation that I hope you can put at the top of your list as being important to your residents, to a portion of the township, that has to be resolved in a way that everybody is at least partially satisfied. Because I am really worried, and I don't want to come up here after we've had a death due to negligence on all of our parts, that that issue on Fountain Farm has not been resolved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This brings us to other business. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I do appreciate that. One of the things about a resolution for the speed on Fountain Farm Lane, which I didn't mention earlier, I know that the issue of speed bumps is something that the township's afraid of based upon damage to vehicles or those sorts of things. But if you look at a very similar road, Summit Trace Drive on the other side, I know it's not Newtown Township, but we're all aware of the same similar, almost a mirror image in Middletown Township behind the Giant Shopping Center, that you will see they've added stop signs along that road to slow people down. Not because they needed stop signs because there's a massive amount of traffic there, but adding stop signs along Fountain Farm Lane wouldn't be that expensive to do, and it would slow people down. Certainly down by Cannon Court where the playground is, they fly past there. You have children. Down by My End, if we added one stop sign, it doesn't even have to be every direction. If you look at the ones that are on in Middletown, it's not both directions. It's two out of three sides. It wouldn't hurt to have a stop sign down by Cannon. It wouldn't hurt to have a stop sign near North Rip or somewhere else on either side of the road, midway through at one-third each down the road between the beginning at Penn Street and ending at State Street. And as far as being able to walk from the parking lot that's at the condominiums, that's a half-mile walk for me to go from my house to there. Now, I'm in good shape, but we have residents that are quite elderly. It's not a 55 and older community, but effectively it is. And Hanukkah's coming up. Hanukkah's really big on my street. There's never enough parking when folks come to celebrate Hanukkah on my street. So given the fact that we have folks that are inviting people for holidays, we have one extra parking space for every two homes. Just remember that number. You can invite one-half a person on average. Now, even if one-quarter of the people invite friends, they can only invite two people. Do the math. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none? Is there any other business this evening?
I had a question regarding the 2026 budget. I know in the manager's report, the process has started, and we haven't yet been having meetings with department heads. Is that in the planning between now and the next board meeting? Because it's getting quite late. Once the draft budget is out, it has to be advertised for 20 days before we can vote on it. So the earliest vote, and where it's made public, has to be November 25th. Two days, yes. You can't vote? Well, when's the draft budget going to be advertised?
No, the intent is to present it at the next meeting, and then the board has the option to either advertise it at the next meeting or the following meeting, which is, I believe, November 12th.
Well, it has to be advertised for 20 days before we can vote on it.
Correct.
So when it is advertised, it's a public document, is that correct?
Yes.
So is there any...
So that would be 20 days.
20 days. So it'd be 20 days from the 22nd of October.
Yes, and that's the next meeting.
So your plan is to launch it? What's it called? Hang it? Should be hung on the 22nd of October.
That's up to the board.
And the board makes that decision...
It will be presented on the 22nd.
Right, it'll be presented on the 22nd.
The manager will present it on the 22nd.
So the idea of making it to hang the budget will be October 22nd, come before the board, we vote on it, and the next day it's hung?
If we vote for it, it will be hung.
If we vote to hang it. That's the 23rd. And then you have, you need to have 20 days before you can vote on it.
Before you adopt it, yes.
So that would bypass the November, 1st November meeting, and we'd have to vote on it on the 25th of November.
Either that or the December meeting.
Right. Okay, I'm just, but before that...
John, we don't have to vote on anything until we see that we approve the budget.
Yes.
Okay? We have up until December 31st, and it's happened in the past to approve a budget. So just because it's presented, and then we say, "Let's hang it for those 20 days," doesn't mean after that 20 days, we have to approve that budget.
Right.
Hopefully, there'll be discussions on the budget, maybe cuts or additions and so on, but unless the administration gives us such a perfect budget, we don't have to worry about that.
Right.
But I mean, to say we have to vote on the budget after 20 days is not accurate.
I didn't say that. I said that's the earliest you could vote on it.
Correct. Provided everything is acceptable to all of us.
Yes. Could vote means you don't have to vote.
Sure.
Could vote.
Absolutely.
But it has to be done by December 31st.
Right. But meanwhile, before then, we need to have these meetings with, I guess, the police chief, the Public Works Department.
I'll be sending an email out shortly.
Okay. Don't call me shortly. Thank you.
Any other business? Seeing none? Go Phillies. I called, I adjourned this meeting at 8:30.